To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I open up this on Thursday, 21st, Eastern Commissioners Meeting. We have orders rep here, all three commissioners and county attorney all present. So first on the agenda, Barry Ritter.
I got first.
Good evening, Barry.
Good evening.
Go ahead. You got any extra?
Not yet, I will.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. So before you is the interlocal agreement that has been drafted for full consolidation of the PSAB in the county, the 911 Center at Rochester City Police Department. We started on this several weeks ago and it's been finalized. It needs to be approved by commissioners. Tomorrow, the mayor will take it to city council for ratification and then come back to council. So what this document does that's before you is it replaces an ordinance that's over 27 years old, if you remember back in 97. You probably weren't here, but there was an ordinance enacted that created the 911 Center as the emergency communication center. And the bulk of that document was the job description of the director and had a little more in it than that. It did create a 911 board, but with no role or responsibility. So this interlocal agreement, it's not an MOU. It's the interlocal agreement because there's a financial component to it. So it fully consolidates the dispatch responsibilities that the Rochester Police Department has today back into the 911 Center. So they will be the only emergency communication center in the county. It creates a new operations board that serves in advisory capacity to assist the 911 director in establishing standard operating procedures for the center. In the past, those policies have been brought to commissioners. And in this interlocal agreement for the establishment of that ops board, it'll be their responsibility to approve operational policies as proposed by the 911 director. The director serves as a county department head, obviously answers to the board of commissioners and fiscally to county council. It incorporates a previously drafted MOU for sharing Spillman CAD. If you recall, several weeks ago, there was a MOU that had been drafted that sheriff and police chief were working on for Rochester Police Department to have access to Spillman. It takes that language and incorporates into this interlocal agreement. The financial contribution, the city of Rochester will pay $100,000 annually to the county for 911 and dispatching services. And they'll also pay the additional fee for the CAD access in Spillman. It's effective November 1st and it's a four-year agreement. So it'll go through October 31st of the 28th. The operations board, the membership of that board is somewhat different than what has traditionally been here. Some of these are virtue of office. They're on the board, others would be appointed. So the operations board consists of the sheriff, the city police chief, the city fire chief, the county coroner or designate, one fire chief of a unit within the county appointed by the president of County Fire Association Board, one police chief or law enforcement officer in the county other than the sheriff of the city police department, and then one representative of EMS, which would be the department. That seven-member board would be the operation advisory board working with the 911 director. I think that fits the highlights of that agreement. The panel yield and answering questions that you may have.
The only one I had, what would have is, you know, we're going to do that thing for Brittany tonight on personnel. So we should go ahead and sign that, but hereafter, this board, that board is designed here once this gets up and going, we'll be doing that. Is that correct? Is that how, do I understand, our right policy?
Yes, I think she was going to present to you the EMS policy this evening.
Yes. She sent us a copy that you can run a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, she and I discussed that. I tried to go ahead and present that to you because it's effective today.
Okay.
On passage. And then what we will do going forward is that the standard operating procedures that exist need to be reviewed and updated and new ones written. So we will work with Brittany to do that. And then the new board will approve those policies as presented. So if you do approve that, I need two copies signed. Brittany will take those to the mayor in the morning for councilback on tomorrow and then they'll come back to the county for the council. Do you have any other questions or discussions from anybody? Okay, hearing end, all appear. Motion carries three up. That works.
Do you want to get a copy of this before you take some?
Sure.
Yeah.
I prefer Steve, you know, oh, yeah, Dave's got that first. This one.
Thank you, Barry.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a Baker-Tully contract here. How you look that silver, correct?
Yeah.
This is for a scope of work. We will sign contract and it's up to the council to determine what services they would like to perform. So there's various. Just to do, we have a comprehensive plan, not to exceed 35,000, annual budget assistance and analysis, not to exceed 25,000, budget 101 training, not to exceed 2,500, gateway annual report, not to exceed 8,500, property tax levy appeals, not to exceed 2500. Reestablish a team of the fund, not to exceed 2,500. They have some time and expense rates here if they get in something like that. So that's part of this contract. Like I said, the council, they will pick whatever services they would like to use.
By signing this, they were not agreeing to nothing until the council says that.
Yeah, yeah. But we'll use.
And then it's out of budget.
Yeah, without fund.
Right.
Whatever.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions on that? I hear you've got an entertaining motion to approve the Baker-Tully contract.
Let's move.
Second, all favor. Motion carries three up. This year, or next year, on 25, we're adding Presidents' Day, non-election year. So we've got New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Presidents' Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, Lincoln's Birthday observed, Christmas, and Washington's Birthday observed. Any questions on that?
Same number we have every year.
Nope. Okay, entertaining motion to approve the 25 holiday. So move.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries through. It's a resolution of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. The county of Fulton, Indiana, established meeting times for 2025. Whereas Fulton County Commissioners have established that they will meet on the first and third Monday of each month at 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. respectively in the Commissioners' Meeting Room in the Fulton County Office Building with the exception of, you know, holiday falls on the first Monday or third Monday, and in the other special circumstances, as necessary, then we'll do that and meet on the next day. Whereas Fulton County Board of Commissioners have established times as set out under the Indiana Code 36-2-2-6. Now therefore be resolved that the Fulton County Commissioners, that Fulton County Commissioners have established and that they will meet on the first and third Monday of each month at 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. respectively, and in other special circumstances, in the Commissioners' Meeting Room in Fulton County Office Building located at 125 East Knight Street, Rochester, Indiana. Thursday, Monday, holiday, the Fulton County Commissioners will meet on the following business day. A year-end meeting will be held on the last business day of the year at 9:00 a.m. If other meetings are scheduled, the public will be given notice. Our meeting, I need to list the dates. So do we have any questions about that from anybody? You guys good?
Yeah, good.
Entertained.
To approve.
So second. Well, fair. Motion carries three up. Dave, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, we've had, due to some recent fires here this last week, brought to our attention, we need to go over a bird band, try and get out a little more emphasis on it. Talked with the prosecutor, the sheriff, county attorney, as well as EMA. We found that there is a state statute that violating the bird band is a class C misdemeanor pursuant to IC Code, IC 14-23-7-5. This carries a jail sentence up to 60 days and a fine of up to $500 and for violation of this ordinance. So just wanted to make that aware, to remind people, we are extremely dry. We've been two and a half months without any rain. And due to the recent fires, there are still people out here wanting to burn leaves, burn trash, and to burn barrels, things along this line. We've had cornfields, bean fields go standing and not caught on fire. So hopefully this, realizing this ordinance may slow this down, that people will know that you don't burn. But it's going to take several days, as it's going to have to rain in order to get this to them, or lift this and get it back going. So this isn't, I guess, anything to be voted on. It's just a matter of reading it into the minutes as better explanation of the current bird band that's in place. Anybody have any questions on it?
Okay. All right, we're done. Louise?
Yes. Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
Ladies, thank you for having me here this evening. I wanted, when I came back here in May, I was really kind of short on Guardian Advocates. So today, my hope is to be able to give you guys a better understanding of what our organization is. We are, I'm Alacia Sirtis, I'm the executive director for the West. We were forming in 2022, Area 5 Adult Guardianship Program. We merged with our sister program at the beginning of 2023, split into two divisions. I'm the West. I've served five counties since 2020, and they're the East. So give you a little bit of back history about Guardian Advocates. So the state of Indiana, the Supreme Court did some investigation back in 2012 on the need and demand for an adult guardianship program. So after their investigation, they concluded that there was a high need for it, so they created this BASIA program, volunteer advocates for seniors and incapacitated adults. They got funding through the Supreme Court for this specific organization. So out of the 92 counties, BASIA now serves 52 of the 92 counties. Each organization has their own county set. Again, Guardian Advocates is east and west. I'm West and I serve five of those 92 counties. So what is a guardian? A guardian is a court-appointed fiduciary over an individual who exhibits incapacitative behavior, whether that is, can we help in making personal and financial healthcare decisions and managing their income and property? An incapacitated person is identified as somebody who is unable to manage those things, whether it's due to a physical illness, mental incapacities, illness, insanity, drunkenness, so substance abuse, incarceration, fraud. Our least restrictive alternative is guardianship. There's other least restrictive alternatives you all may be familiar with, such as the power of attorney or a healthcare representative. Unfortunately, we are strictly guardianship, so that's what we, we work with pro bono attorneys within the community to obtain guardianship for individuals who are named by a physician, medical doctor, as incapacitated. But our least restrictive alternative under the guardianship is if the individual is able and has enough capacity to be able to function in their own residency, they live in their own apartment, then that would be considered our least restrictive alternative. Majority of our individuals do reside in a long-term care facility or in group home settings. I think we have two of the 35 that we currently have guardianship for that live in their own apartments. And it's very, very easy to manage those individuals. If there's a high need individual, unfortunately, we'd probably need a little bit more assistance with that individual. So skipping down to page three, some of our donors and contributors for our organization does include the Supreme Court. Like I said, they did get funding through the Supreme Court for these grants that we file every year in October. They do oversee currently, last year, 2023, they were, they awarded 1.3 million in matching funds to 20 volunteer-based parents, which were 21 now, I believe. These programs have assisted over 800 vulnerable adults in Indiana. So their two-for-one deal is if I get 37, five in my five counties, I can apply up to 75,000 for their matching grants. But the last three years, I think we've approximately gotten between 50 and 55,000 from the Supreme Court. There are other expectations on this grant. We have to have 10 volunteers a year and we have to have 10 guardianships a year. Our volunteer status is, we, it's weak. And so recently, we have hired our community outreach coordinator, Liberty Harp, to service our five counties. And then that's part-time, and then we have a part-time for the East. So we're hoping to get involved in the community more, working with United Ways. I know she's around here particularly, reached out to the attorney's office. And we've actually gotten a new board member through Andy's office and stuff like that, working with Lauren as well. There are many to go to, people for pro bono attorneys around here. So, but she's working with them to get in more connection with other resources in the community. We're hoping to be able to attend more events next year, get her name out there, who we are, what we do. We get calls all the time for guardianship. So the role, or the, the way we get guardianship, anybody and everybody can give me a call. My number's posted everywhere if they know me. Hospitals, law enforcement, long-term care facilities, even a concerned neighbor, if they know of somebody who has potentially been hoarding, or not getting groceries, or not taking care of themselves when they observe this, they can give me a call or reach out to the Area 5 agency for my contact information and they'll send it my way. So these individuals give us a referral, just identifying the basic demographics on the individuals and their needs that aren't being met. And I will then do a face-to-face follow-up with that individual and create what's called a social profile. I do have six years of servicing guardianship through this organization, and I do have a background of mental health and healthcare, so I know things to look for when I'm speaking to these individuals. So when we go out, we're basically setting a profile. Does this person meet our needs? Is it somebody we can absolutely serve? So we currently have three individuals that are on our waiting list. We've done a social profile on them. And then after we do that, we send out the physician's reports to the doctors and try to communicate the need to them, that they have no other existing family or that can or is able to act as guardian. That's why we need to come in as a third-party guardianship organization to help out, because there's nobody else for these individuals in their lives, whether they're estranged or they're just, they can't do it themselves, or whatever. So this, on page five, I've gotten some examples in here. I think it's really critical that I explain to you some of these situations that we walk into. This young lady and her dog, 33 years old, muscular dystrophy. We were able to meet up with her in this deplorable home that she was living in. She had been completely bed-bound, muscular dystrophy, she can't use her legs. She'd been laying in the same bed for about a year, hadn't had a shower for about a year. She had, the house was infested with roaches, bedbugs, lice, you name it. There were two little children living there as well, with the caretaker of this lady. And she had her little doggy. So we got this individual into a long-term care facility intermittently until we could get her some type of least restrictive alternative, such as her own apartment and an assisted living. All the while, I was, I was the dogtaker. So this little chihuahua lived with me for about four months until we got her placed. And now she lives in an assisted living, assisted living gladly, happily, has her own kitchenette, her own living room, her own bedroom, her own bathroom, but she has 24-hour care. So they're able to help her with her medications and getting showers and stuff like that. So that has significantly increased her quality of life. And that is what our organization is about, is taking these people who have nobody to advocate for them and helping them out initially. And I'm the one that goes to court. I petition for the guardianships through these pro bono attorneys for all the individuals. Once we get the individuals established, that's when the volunteers come in. Liberty's job and responsibility is to hire and train the volunteers so that we can match them up with the individuals that are already established, and they can continue to be our eyes and ears on these individuals. We have strong connection with our volunteers. We're always communicating with them. And they're doing it out of kindness of their hearts. They can, our state law requires through the guardianship program, one visit a month. Our volunteers go well above and beyond, and we have approximately nine right now that are actively seeing clients of the 35. And they go well above and beyond. They see them weekly, advocate with the providers, everything. So it really, really helps the organization. So that's just her story, but there's many stories like this. We have had some unfortunate stories where individuals were completely physically incapacitated. We tried to work with the hospital on getting a physician's report for the individual. She was a chronic alcoholic, could not walk, and was at the hospital detoxing for three days. It was prime COVID. They couldn't get her placement at a mental hospital, they couldn't get her placement at a long-term care facility. So what did the hospital do? Without a physician's report showing her incapacitation, they discharged her back home. She died two weeks later of liver failure from going back to that alcohol abuse. Whereas my, my attempt to her was to say, this is not quality of life. Let us offer you a better quality of life. Let us help you out. And she had agreed to that willingly, to go to the hospital. And unfortunately, that hospital didn't do her service because she is now deceased. So we see many, many situations like this all the time. But the joy of our organization is if you flip to the next one, these ladies right here, I mean, getting them out of the deplorable situations that they're living in and promoting better quality, teaching them life skills. The one, Danzen, she's, she is 32 years old. You know, we got her into a group home. And her quality of life, just learning how to cook. We take stuff like that for granted every day because we know how to do it. But teaching these individuals with intellectual disabilities or dementia, how to live on their own again, independently as much as possible. And we do act as paid representatives for these individuals. So, and that is monitored by the courts as we are obligated to file 30, 16, 90 annual reports to the courts about their finances, about the guardianship, in which I do manually on all our clients. Empowerment, our individuals' work, supportive decision-making. Just because they're incapacitated doesn't mean they're invalids. So they still have the right to make decisions. We're just there to help support those decisions that they're making. And then as you see, if you flip over to the next page, what is the role of volunteering a staff member? I've kind of just briefly gone over that. The volunteer essentially does have the ability to make the same decisions as we do, but we ask them to, to talk to us about any serious important decisions that they make. And again, flip to the next page, you've got our volunteers, some more of our clients, and then a very important page. So it's really hard to put numbers on this organization because a lot of times, communities will be like, oh, well, you're only serving five in our community. Well, we have a population of 100,000, so how are you meeting any needs? And the thing is, is that these individuals that we are serving are the ones that are slipping through the cracks, the one that nobody reaches and, and just starts to, unfortunately, so where APS would step in, but APS isn't able to remove them from the home or necessarily has the grounds to remove them from the home. So again, we are able to go in, do the social profile, say, you know, we can offer you services, better quality of life, and then work with providers on getting those. So if you look specifically at Fulton County, we currently serve six. We have four individuals out of this six that currently still live in Fulton County. The other two individuals, because of group home placement, have to live in one of our other five counties. But they do well. They all do great. We had a brother and sister initially when we started in Fulton County. Mom was abusing and using and giving them drugs, and there was sexual abuse, physical abuse, mental abuse, all that. But the boyfriend is just a whole big old mess with both of these intellectually disabled individuals, probably IQs of, I know she's probably about 13 and he's probably about an eight. So going through all that, so they got removed from the home and into group home placement, and they unfortunately don't have contact with mom anymore. I wish she would have been a better person to be in their lives because we would, we would have definitely supported that. But unfortunately, those are the decisions she's made. So the children do not, I call them, sorry, they, the adults do not have contact with the mother anymore. But they do good. We become their family. We become their sisters, their mothers, their aunts, their nieces. However the age is, we assume that role, staff. We have two staff. We have me, an executive director, paperwork, clients, you name it, I do it. And then you got my case manager, who is fantastic. And she primarily serves Fulton County. She's here to see them every week, making sure that the providers' needs are being met, with the clients' needs being met. She does a fantastic job. So, and we currently have three pending, which like I said, once we get more volunteers, I hope to, and that takes money, to hire that position, to hire and train volunteers. So, and in total, we've, we've helped 18 altogether. So approximately out of budgets, we work on about a $230,000 budget. We put that standard very high. Last year, we had the same standard, roughly about the same standard, and we brought in approximately about 140,000. So we were nowhere near, again, that will just take us Again, that will just take us getting out with the community, and, and getting familiar, and getting those resources connected. But, so we've been so grateful, because the commissioners and the city council has been serving our organization since 2020, and thankfully, and so I'm back here again, and because our numbers are still kind of low in this community, approximately nine percent of a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar budget would be about twenty thousand dollars. So with the city council, the commissioners, and NCIF, that puts it about eighteen thousand for the community as a whole, for us to serve. Again, unfortunately, I can't put numbers on these things, and that's the best that I can give you. But we are here again, asking for a six-thousand-dollar donation, to continue this service in the community.
What did we give last, last night?
Five thousand.
Five? So you're up another thousand dollars.
Yes, yes. And then the city council, where, I've been speaking with Amy, where I'm gonna meet at the Hope Center come February. I didn't get the opportunity to really explain to them, like I just did to you guys thoroughly at the last city council meeting, and I would love to do that for them as well. So that's, I'm gonna be meeting with them in February at the Hope to better explain.
Do you use a Mindy Travis, or?
Yeah, we do. It's a good resource, it's, I mean, it, it is most vulnerable of the population, so it is the ones that slip through the cracks, the ones that fail. So, it may not be huge in numbers, but definitely a need, it's huge, so.
Can I entertain a motion in for twenty, we want it for twenty-five?
Yeah.
Do we know the council, the council, what they put in for?
No, we haven't.
We can make a.
We can make a work.
Okay.
So make a motion for six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions for anybody?
All right, thank you gentlemen, not a good evening.
Okay, then I have that call from Pastor Larry from the Church of God, they're looking for permission to use the west side of the courthouse for a prayer service on November third, at five p.m., to, to pray for the elections, and all the, the running for office. Entertained, okay, questions on that? Entertained, motion approved, let me use that. Prayer's gonna use a sidewalk, kind of, or west side.
I'll second.
Motion carries three out. Okay, we have the Purdue contract. Paul, you looked that over?
Yes, it's fine.
It was last year, except for the dollar amount. Purdue was looking for a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten dollars.
What did we pay last year? A hundred... Can you tell us, can you look it up? I was thinking around a hundred-and-twenty, but I couldn't.
That sounds about right. Everybody's budgets going up.
Would it have been around this time last year?
Yeah. Oh, that might've come out the way.
Late last year.
It has to be close to what it was.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on the Purdue contract? Does that have to be based on council approval?
That's in our budget.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all clear. Motion carries three out. Okay. Apartment updates, John Geyer Highway.
We've got a couple of permits for you. The first one is permit request, twenty-four forty-two. David McKinley, he's requesting permit to install a drain under County Route one fifty north, six-hundred-and-eighty feet west of County Road ten fifty west. And it would be a directional four. That one, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. Any questions for John on this?
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion carries three out.
Second one is permit request, twenty-four forty-three. DSN groups, on behalf of Comcast Cable, they're requesting a directional four of a two-inch, one, two-inch fiber optic duct, forty-eight inches under County Road four, or five fifty north, at two oh eight east, on five fifty north. They're also requesting permission to cut the asphalt there, pothole, to locate utilities if it's necessary.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Motion approved, approved, twenty-four forty-three. Second. Questions? All clear.
We have to speed on what the guys are doing, because they've been patching, running the brush cutter. They did shoulder the community crossings, roads, they got those done. They're wrapping up mowing, I think we've got about two days left, and then that whole county will be mowed four times. So, we've got one more, it's still going. By Wednesday, it'll be done. I did meet with David, or not David, but Luke Smith today. We went and looked at the topsoil, they got the corn off in the field there, south of the highway. We went and looked at the topsoil, we discussed, he was good with it, we're gonna start putting that down tomorrow. We'll get that all wrapped up, and put it back in. Update on community crossings, they, like I said, they got the pavement done over in Algonquin Township, and Union, on those projects. We did have final inspection on those, and it's turned out all right. There was a couple of blemishes, and they came back and sealed them. Everything's pretty good, so we're gonna get those closed out. Brian called me earlier last week, and he wanted, he discussed with the, maybe a rate guard, speed limit sign up on Wall Bash. I see today's some information on those. Looks like they're around six thousand dollars. I don't know if that's something you guys want to entertain, or?
The request comes from me, from the mayor. He had his citizen call in, because, and Wall Bash is, it's kind of a nice road.
For, you said from eighteen to ten?
Yeah.
We have, we constantly get calls on that. I know Travis has put us, one of his, we portable sign there.
We run traffic enforcement out there, I mean, it's just, everybody just screams up and out in the road.
Does that, does history of those help, when, when that flashes, and people, will they slow down, you think? I mean, is it a?
Yeah, I mean, because I don't think people purposely, most of them are just general public that are driving through there, from, from this community, so I don't think they're purposely doing it. Like you said, it's a nice road, and it's, it's a rural setting, and I just, I don't think, just to get moving down there. Yeah, just to move down there, but yeah, it's, it, it, something needs done out there.
What is that, thirty-five?
Yeah, yeah.
And the speed limit won't change, you're just kind of alerting to the?
Yeah, it'd be a permanent fixture, there'd be, it'd be a, a, basically a speed limit sign that lights up and tells you how fast you're gonna go.
That's what an acre.
Oh, thank you, Dr.
And I know the lake has a couple, the, the Lake Association put up, Fulton's got one, I assume the town put that up.
Did you need a both ways in John, or?
I think if you wanted to really get your, get, get a.
I know it wasn't affirmative with us, we're at the wrong direction, it's both directions.
Yeah.
I don't know, what's, what's your thoughts? Six thousand, quite big.
Yeah, I don't have the money right away for it. I mean, something maybe we could do first year, or we can appropriate, or we could just, I don't know, that's why I brought it up for discussion.
Yeah, that's a little more than I was thinking, like, hey.
I do have, that, that's one quote, I've got others coming in to me, but I haven't got them yet, they could be.
Why don't we wait, see what they come in, see if you can get them a little cheaper?
This is City and County both, isn't it?
That's county against county.
Oh, the whole county? Could raise the speed limit, that's free.
I, I think it is a, it's just a matter of, can we actually swing in?
Yeah.
Why don't you see what the next ones come in, and we, we can get a little cheaper, sure justify it a little better.
Thank you for answering that, John.
Yeah, yeah, update, you might get more information. On equipment, we did receive the first Western Star out of the two that we ordered this year. So it's sitting there at the highway, it's getting, as soon as the second one comes in, we'll take it to W.A. Jones, a good one to work on, I think in November, start on. We should have it by the end of the year. I do have a transfer request in today, for you. It's, I don't have it written down there, but I do have it there, it's six thousand dollars, coming from the, our Tepico River Fund, miscellaneous highway. And what that is for is for tiling that we done along four hundred north, that we paved, we widened and raised that road, we created a side ditch, it was about three foot deep, right? Actually, the white line actually wasn't even fully on the road. So we put a fifteen-inch tile in there, and closed that.
So you're just going to pay for that?
Yeah. It was a very needed project. And then I have, I sent to you late today, and if you just want to look it over, well, I guess this one's a change order, Rule thirty-one. Basically, what it requires is anytime you make a change, twenty thousand dollars, or less, one way or the other, you have to have a change order. So there's, in this, our original bid for thirty-one was four million, sixty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, eighty-five cents. We came in at three million, six-hundred-and-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and three cents. There was some changes, because we didn't have to take out all the concrete that we assumed, we didn't have to do as much wedge, wedge leveling. There was just a lot of savings, so I mean, one savings was twenty-eight thousand dollars for not having a field office, that saved that. Anyway, long story short, we will be getting back, so we save four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. We get twenty percent of that back, which was our match. So in total, we're gonna get back ninety thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Nice to go under, it's over.
Yeah. But in order to do that, I have to have one of you sign the change order, and I, I'm the other signature, E R C N's.
Entertained, motion to approve that change order. John, just describe. So move.
Second.
In all favor?
Then I also sent you later today, and if you want to hold these off till the next meeting, that's fine. The one was a authorization proceed with USI for small structure inspection, which they've been doing our small structures for many years now. I'm not sure how many. But we've got twenty-three small structures that need inspected, that'd be at three-hundred-and-fifty dollars each, totally, project fee of eight thousand, fifty dollars.
It's just one thing with the dollar bill?
On that one, yeah, just where I had the little posted thing.
What do you classify as small structures?
So a bridge is twenty feet in span, or greater, and a small structure is that down to, I believe, forty-eight inch height, or concrete logs, whatever it might be. Every, so many years, we try to get so many inspected, that there's thousands.
Yeah.
Yeah, really ain't had time to look it over.
Hey, we can hold, we can postpone that.
Is that a big hurry? Well, when, when's your old one expire? When do, when do you have that?
So, we don't have that on contract right now, that, the last contract, bit fulfilled. But it's for winter work.
Let's put it on the agenda for the next time, so we can have, if, if you guys are okay with that, look over, look over.
That's, that's fine. The other one I had was an on-call agreement with USI.
Okay.
For next year, and we do one every year. So, I have that, if you want to take time and look it over too, we can come back to that next meeting, or?
You in a hurry?
No, no.
Okay, let, let's do them both, next meeting, if, if you guys are okay with this works.
Yeah, yeah, I have no, no issues with that.
I just like to look over some.
Yeah, and like I said, I sent it to you late today, because I didn't get it till then. I think that's everything I had for you tonight.
Okay, anything else for John?
I believe so.
Okay, John, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Okay. We have a dog, E M A.
How are you guys? As you guys know, I've been in and out, and trying to catch up, we catch up all day today. Couple things on the radar for us right now. One thing that we did complete, we had three volunteers go and help out with the car show, slash, yeah, chili cook-off for the city this last weekend, yeah. And that was a big success, they were very, very appreciative to have those, and those three volunteers had to be there at six o'clock in the morning. So, the city was very appreciative of that. The L A P C group has, they're gonna be rescheduling a exercise that they are to do, and the committee will be getting together on rescheduling that particular exercise. And that makes us grant, makes us grant compliant with having that, so. The twenty thousand dollars I know I brought up before, that we thought were grant funds, those funds are already there, they're already allocated, is the way I'm understanding it. So we do have the one bid, which falls around ten thousand of the twenty, so I'm gonna reach out for a couple more things to be done for the building on that twenty thousand that's allocated. So, as soon as I have that, so we're in good graces, and we'll put all that in the right order. So, I know we were talking about whether it had to have three, you know, three or not, but it is going to the newspaper, try one more time with everybody, to get those approved. So, I know Kerry worked with it, but I'll get ahold of the Shoppers Guide and the Seminole both tomorrow, get them in there, get one more round, and get that, so we can get this taken care of, get that money put to rest. Right now, I have two grants that are open that I'll be applying for this week. One is that good old E M P G grant, it did open up. So, I'll get up, beginning that one, started, the process, and the other one is too, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but they're both for E M A, and the grants that we do, so I'll get both of those started this week. I was at E M A conference last week, Monday through Friday, learned some things, learned a few things, moving forward, that's gonna help out a lot. And as I said at our last meeting, for those who weren't there, on the morning meeting with commissioners, is I did get my three and four hundred put in, those are done, those move forward, make us compliant. Anyways, I'm tired, guys. I was gone all last weekend, I'm taking off. This next week, I will be leaving as of Thursday, and be back on Tuesday. And as always, I have my volunteers ready, bring her in to go for all of us, so I know there's a few of us that'll be gone, but that particular exercise that we were gonna be doing would've been this next Saturday, which is also early voting in the Grass Creek area, where we were having the exercise. So we've really had to back up a lot of different areas on that one, so.
John, so when you post this to the, for the grants, how, how do they contact you to, if they want to bid on something out there?
Oh, now, that, that one there, for that twenty thousand allocated?
Would you have a list of stuff you're training to accomplish for people to bid on or what?
Yeah, yeah, I do have. What we originally wanted done was the windows replaced and all the exterior doors excluding the bay doors. Those all needed replaced. They're like still, they're single-pane windows and they're just awful. So that bid right now, and that building, the way it was constructed, the way I understand it, has to be peeled back, put in and changed, so.
So did they talk to you or where did they get it all from?
They got it all from Kerry.
Okay, so.
So I put in the Sentinel and I will, I'll get with Kerry in the morning if he wants to be the main contact for that.
Well, I could throw it on the radio in the morning, but I just...
Yeah, yeah.
Just Kerry see the contacts. We'll have you go.
So the other thing, with that being said, with the ten, it's around ten, just over ten for the windows, doors, dah 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 dah. We're looking at possibly also doing some garage doors. Neither one of those bay doors have garage door openers on them. You know, it's rather a pain, especially in climate weather with the two trucks. And then we're also depending possibly flooring, going through and putting in, getting rid of a carpet, going to a nice laminate-type flooring in there.
So you have a list of a few items you'd like to get bid on?
That'll get the rest of the quotes on to get us at that mark. You know, but when you're already looking at one said ten thousand, and you know you got twenty, so. Thank you for mentioning that tomorrow.
Yeah. Anything else for them?
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Good evening, Charles.
Good evening. I emailed out the reports last week. Any questions on those or anything? Pretty standard month. We had, as of last two today, so this one I printed off for the member for the council. We had a hundred and twenty-six inmates, forty-seven were home for Grant County, nineteen for Howard County, and six federal inmates. We invoiced for a little over a hundred and seventeen thousand in the month of September for county inmates and federal inmates. We got the estimates for the two thousand twenty-five Tahu's. They actually only went up twenty-two hundred dollars from the two thousand twenty-fours. So we were pleasantly surprised with that considering all the police car issues other people are having, different manufacturers. Went over the bird band. Food contract, I sent you guys copy of this, Holly saw that as well. I guess I'm looking for a motion to... Or asking you guys if you can approve this, like assign. They only went up four percent from last year. The meals are only going up between nine and ten cents a meal for E M A, so, yeah.
Are you agreeing for that?
Yeah. They agree for us, and they really, really happy for us, so.
I can motion to approve.
Good, all fair. Motion carries.
They've started on the maintenance building. They wanted their second installment today for their maintenance building, and then explained to them how county government works, and they were afraid to pump the brakes on it a little bit. So I went ahead and wrote a check out of commissary, and then we'll just get reversed out of the building storage. Fun for that, so. And I think that's all I've got for you, unless you guys have any information.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you.
Christian, Charles.
Brittany, nine oh one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a couple things. I sent an email regarding the modified EMS policy, so I was hoping to get approval on that today. It's similar to the one that you guys had before. I just changed some verbiage and actually worked with Barry to kind of restructure that to the way that we foresee the policies in the future to be formatted and put together. Any questions on that?
How do you see that working? Are you going to have each employee initial it until you've got it in your file or what?
Yeah, so once it's approved, what I'll do is I'll go in and just kind of modify it with a line for the signature of, and then give a copy to them and also file that to make sure that everyone's clear on it.
Yeah, what they're acknowledging with their signature is that they've read it. They're going to agree with it. It doesn't matter if they agree with it. It's just that they've read it correct.
Yeah, that they've read it, and then obviously we have a leg to stand on and the policy is...
It's like a personal policy. You just have to acknowledge.
We've already got some kind of issues with this. So it's best to get it in order that way, you know, if something else turns up that now they say that they've seen it, they've read it and understand it, and kind of open the floor for them to ask questions or why we're doing that. Okay, so.
We'll prove this real quick.
Okay, sorry.
So we have the nine oh one communication standard operating procedures policy. Motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
All fair. Motion carries.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing that. Let's see. So as of today, we had eleven, we have eleven full-time dispatchers, twelve including me. Two of our new dispatchers, or two of the two, started today. So one was in the morning, and then my second one shows up at eight o'clock to start her first shift. Right now, we have one part-timer, and I think it's few and far between when she's able to work. So I actually have posted for accepting new applications for part-time help. I haven't really received anything on that yet, but that's kind of where I'd like to go.
But what's the number of them? There's quite a few of them you can use.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Christine had told me seven, but my brain is a little fuzzy right now, but I believe it's seven. I don't think we'll need that many, but it'd be nice to have a little bit of backbone to have.
So you can switch it off or call one of them.
So we've had some sickness going through the center, which has allowed me to work a little bit more in dispatch. So also, in addition to me working, we've had to kind of use the overtime budget because I can't work all of it. So, you know, that's another thing that's going to benefit getting these new... I mean, it's going to take about six to twelve months for the new dispatchers to be trained, but then in addition, if we can find some part-time, that'll help with the overtime budget for sure. Sorry, I made this less when I was working dispatch, so I'm trying to... Anyways, with all the sickness and stuff, the dispatchers have done great, working alongside me and just making the schedule work. So we've been able to keep things covered. So the teamwork is fantastic right now, and I really appreciate them for, for doing that. Okay, so last week, I requested to have a meeting with the job classification committee regarding the assistant director's pay structure. Without being consulted or notified at the meeting, the job classification committee made a recommendation to the council. The discussion at the council meeting was kind of misrepresented or mispresented regarding the intent of my request. So I just wanted to, for the record, the way it was translated wasn't the way that I had seen it going. It was more of just a conversation I wanted to have with the classification committee versus an actual decision. If that makes sense. I just had some questions about the structure of the pay versus actually something changing. So I just wanted to note that, that it didn't go the way that it should have. Also, I appointed Jennifer Duff as my assistant nine oh one director. The next pay period, she'll kind of start her duties, but we have one dispatcher that's going to be out of the office for medical purposes. And then obviously, we're training the two, so she's not going to be able to fully go into the assistant duties probably for six to twelve months until those new dispatchers are, are trained, but she has been appointed. And lastly, I have completed my E M D and I D A C training, so I'm legal to dispatch, so. Unless you got anything for me, that's all I got.
You love it, you do.
Yes.
You did a good job, Chris.
Thank you.
Kathy, anything for treasures? You guys had a chance to travel request, requests over?
Yes, I am.
We'll sign those, stack afterwards. The management, you guys, we have minutes.
I didn't.
We did, we got some. I guess we're some notes. Yeah, I'm sure. You guys had a chance to go over the financials, claims, transfers, appropriations, anything we got laying here? Any questions, concerns on that? Okay, we have payroll for ten eighteen of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents with a deduction of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and thirty-six cents. Insurance dispersment for six, nine twenty-six of twenty-four to ten two of twenty-four of six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents. We have insurance docket, October piece, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Insurance dispersment for ten three to ten nine, twenty-four of twelve thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. We have lift distribution, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents. We have utilities, eleven thousand, five hundred and three dollars and forty cents. We have miscellaneous claims for October twenty-first. One minute, two hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Transfer from the public defender board of ninety-five hundred dollars. I guess they've got a, from the investigator education and witness deposition, it's two with a reimbursement conflict attorney. Transfer from the treasurer, four hundred and fifteen dollars from dues and maintenance and equipment to mileage. We have the health department. Thousand dollars for repaired equipment to mileage. County highway, six thousand dollars from the Tepicne River to miscellaneous highway for the file project we just discussed. Health department, thousand dollars from three, from rebound records to mileage. We have the drainage board, two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-six cents for office supply to furniture. Transfer to our account already approved at commissioners meeting for new furniture assets. Okay, I have the ordinance on here. We did this several months ago. Why it says estate, change, I think five words in here. This is the onsite sewage ordinance. Do I need to put the original ordinance number on here for just today's? Or are we doing this as today's?
We're not amending it, we're redoing it, correct?
I believe so, yeah. Okay. We have Fulton County onsite sewage system ordinance, one zero two one, two zero two four. I will not be reading. If anybody wants it, I'll get you a copy. All right. I entertain a motion to have, I can do all three readings on this tonight, right? I entertain a motion to have a second, third reading by title. Okay, we've got Fulton County onsite sewage ordinance system of ordinance, one zero two one, two zero two four. I entertain a motion to approve that ordinance.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Motion carries through. I don't know why it's in a pitch for that.
I got sleepy just reading. I didn't have a choice.
Any old business?
Nope.
Dave?
Nope.
Pauline?
Nope.
Oliver's old business? Any old business for the public? Amy, I missed you, sorry.
That's okay. Wanted to, but you know, that's Don and Kerry and I will be meeting this week to talk about the tougher heating and cooling station, to try to get that moving, so we're just going to put something together and then present it to the pastors. Had some delay and comments back from them, so. Kathy and Beth and I will be meeting with Beaven Home the thirty-first of October to discuss the opioid funding and the potential possibility to continue to look at what a partnership looks like. Dave and I met with somebody on the, virtually, to discuss potential other partnerships with Beaven Home, so trying to figure out what it looks like to bring them here more consistently, if we can be creative in that. So we just keep the conversation going. We finally received the results of the transportation study, thanks to Doug, who used his charm to get that. So we thought we were never going to get the results of that. That was the I U K study that the students did for us, in which we had put a survey out to understand what the needs were for transportation. This has been over a year process. I guess it's free, so we can't complain. But we did receive really great results. Doug and I just talked about it. I chased him down and talked to him about it before I came here. So he wants to be the one to give you the full gamut of what it is, so I am not to steal his thunder, is what he said to me tonight. So, but it was very interesting, and our hope is to meet with Jillian because a lot of the information was related to the employer support with transportation, which was very interesting. So I'll let Doug tell you all about that. We are, I'm trying to think of what else. With the Dora, we are not going to be doing the special event tour, so we will not need the sidewalks. So we are going to be discussing that tomorrow, looking at trying to create something that makes sense for everybody and listening to all of our stakeholders. So that will be a good conversation tomorrow that we're going to have for the city of Rochester. And I think that's it. I can't remember. I've got so many different parts and pieces that we're working on, but I'm blessed to be able to move all of these different things forward, and it takes a lot of work. I'm learning the art of patience. Nothing is fast. But we are getting, we are moving things forward and blessed to be able to come alongside E M A and Kathy and others with Dave and folks to be able to move projects forward, so. If I have forgotten anything, cannot remember. We do have our quarterly meeting, November twentieth. Free lunch. Come check it out. I don't know who the speakers are because Jan Sawyer bosses me about that, so she's the one that bosses me around and sets those up. But that will be another chance for folks to learn about resources that are in the community. And the folks here are going to come and speak with Vazia in February, so. I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public comment here, man. Any new business, Rick?
Oh, yeah. Car show downtown, what, seven hundred and fifty cars and all that. Thanks to everybody that put that on. Sound like it was a great success, so need to be proud of themselves, so, so, thank you.
Dave? I believe so. Oliver's office, public, any new business? Yeah, I got my hair, I got public comment out, so anybody, anything you'd like to...
Go ahead.
Say your name and...
My name is Helen Burden. My dad committed suicide back in December.
Sorry.
And my goal here today is I don't want to see families have to go through what I went through. I had to clean the mess up because we couldn't afford two thousand dollars to have somebody come in for my daddy. So I had to do that. I want to see if there was any way that we can create some help for others. Yes, my dad passed. He's gone. I can't bring him back, but I can try to help others. I can't bring him back, but I can try to help others in that situation. I have spoke to Andy before about this. I have spoke to the mayor and that's why I'm here today, to get my voice heard. And if we can try to get something going on for the county, I will do anything in my power. I will help whatever I can do to get this forward.
Okay, we're real sorry for your loss.
It's not a fun time. Not what I go through every day of my life. I smoke blood every day of my life. Nobody should ever have to go through what I went through with my father. And I am here to say, if I could help anybody out there, I am here and I would do anything to bring it forward. Just to have somebody there to say, you don't have to do that. Because we can have the money. We can do this.
Thank you. I'm not sure we'll have to.
Something I'm talking about?
Yeah, we'll have to discuss that. I appreciate you, it's a hard thing to bring out.
It's another day by fact, I don't know. It's mentally, physically.
Well, I guess we'll discuss it and try to figure out a plan of what options we have and.
I really appreciate it. This is what we do.
Yeah, try to do something.
I'm here, I will do whatever I can do in any way.
Okay, we appreciate that.
And thank you so much for listening to me.
Yeah.
Would you give us your name and number, Travis? Do you got your name and number?
She got my card, I assume you're gonna reach out?
Yes.
Reach out and make contact.
Yeah.
Okay, I really appreciate it, I really do. I mean, anything, anything I can do, just call me, I'll be there. I'm willing and I keep in contact with Pat, so. Thank you for listening, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment?
What kind of help are we talking about?
Well, she, she's looking for financial help.
Oh, isn't there some programs in place already to help with funerals and mental health and all that?
If you're talking, if you're talking in the room, the situation to clean up.
There is people out there to help, but it costs $2,000 to do, to kind of come in and clean blood and stuff like that. And families out here, they ain't got it like that.
Helen must go and clean up, I see.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Ross?
I'm a little concerned with a burn ban making public knowledge. This morning, we went over to a field to pick corn, looked up across the road and a lady's burning trash in a barrel, no screen or anything on it. And I went over and told her, I said, hey, there's a burn ban in Fulton County. Well, I didn't know that. She made it happen well. That alfalfa's green, it won't burn, or two feet from that. Burn barrel was dead grass in a fence row. And I, there's just so many people that don't know what's going on out there. We've had two fires of our own personally, or three fires actually, where we've had to have the fire department, which they're excellent, but man, it's, I'm worried about somebody getting hurt or a crop lost. It's a real concern for the county. The way I understand, it's rumored, but at Cass County is fining people. I mean, in other words, if they've got a fire, it's not washed or not actually set, why they're fining. So, and I hate to be the one have to call Travis or, you know, the fire department all the time, but man, you know, it's a problem. And I mean, I don't know what to do about it. I mean, someone said Facebook. I mean, everybody looks at Facebook, maybe some people could get something done, put it out public on Facebook. I don't know.
We could try, we could, I know.
I posted something out this afternoon and yeah, we'll definitely address it as much as we can. It is a concern for all of us, you know, it's super dry out, so.
When I went out, I did post it on the 911 site, too. Unfortunately, the old 911 site was hacked, so I don't have as many followers on the new one, but I mean, we tried to push it out from 911 to as much as we can.
That's the problem we have with a lot of things is getting the word out today. I mean, for some reason, it just seemed like it, it's hard to get it out there. I mean, on various stuff that we do and it's, I know the paper reader do a great job, you know, getting it out. You know, people don't subscribe to something or they're, you know, they're listening or whatever and that. You would think with technology today, it would be so easy to get word out. And I think it's almost harder now than it used to be, for some reason. It's tough, we struggle with that, so. But we'll, I'll mention tomorrow on the radio, if we can, whatever county offices we have, have Facebook, we'll throw it out on there.
Can you be on the radio again in the morning, you said?
Yeah, I'll be on there.
I know, I did talk to Randy this afternoon and he said he would put it, tell the DJs to periodically mention that we do have a burn ban. And I think you heard, I mean, I read through as far as the fines and the, if you're caught lighting a fire, it's potential to 30 days, or 60 days in jail, $500 fine.
Somebody has to call the sheriff.
But, yeah, somebody's gotta call the sheriff and tell him. Call Travis out there. But.
I think that's something we probably need to look at, I know we spoke to Travis earlier. To re, I forget how Travis said that, we have to redo our ordinance, is that correct?
I think you would have to put penalties in the ordinance first to actually be able to enforce the ordinance as a violation to send it to Holliday County Attorney.
But you know, our animal control ordinance that I filed, they don't, we don't have a fine in that. I, I'm the one who makes the.
That's Holly's, yeah, that's her bail.
We, you give the ordinance violation for the animal ordinance and turn it into me and I file it with the court and get a cause number and then we have a hearing. So that's how that works, so technically that's what we can do.
On the specific ordinance.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm right now waiting on, I did put into IDHS today for the code verification and qualifications behind it. So I got the question into the fire marshal's office on the same thing. So like Holly said, I believe the way I'm seeing it right now until I get that final answer is it's left up to the prosecutor on amounts, as far as what, yeah.
Right, and if it's, if it's the statute, if we get them under the Indiana Code, then that does go to the prosecutor and it's the C misdemeanor. If you get them just on an ordinance violation, like the animal ordinance violation, then that goes to me and I file them. So.
Yeah, once I have that, obviously the three of you will get that when I get that question. I sent it off today in an email, waiting on that question, I didn't have it as the time I left. But I did just have a thought come across my mind of getting with John Flint here and I know we have possibly the use of some sign boards. You know, our electric sign boards that we put out when we have traffic incidents and stuff like that. And I think we might be able to put some wording on those in some key places in the county.
I mean, Travis, my big suggestion is you start filing them as misdemeanors, the word's gonna get.
Oh, I think so.
And that's gonna be the point.
That's, that's kind of a big step on it, first. I mean.
It is, and as long as we've got the prosecutor on board with.
Right.
With the ability to drop it where it needs to be, so.
Right.
Well, and I guess that's my thing, I mean, right now.
It says up to.
Yeah, I mean, he could charge a dollar fine plus court costs on that.
So right now, somebody rolling down the road and they see somebody burning trash, they call in.
Right.
So they violated our ordinance. So do you set a fine, $50 or whatever?
I can set whatever fine I want. That's how I do it with the animal cases.
Okay.
And if they're not very nice, then I decide. If they apply with the police officers, then.
I think once I get this question, like I said, I called the fire marshal's office today and talked with them point blank and I know that I was aware of your situation. So if we put in one, you know, and then we look at the loss, you know, are they, are we now gonna have our resident file against the other and it's just.
And that's why, under the criminal aspect of it, they can get restitution through the prosecutor's office. And so if it's a big one and burns a field down.
Well, that's a little, little different, second to fifth, I'm just, Travis never talks.
Well, yeah, we'll use our.
Yeah, they can just give them a warning, I mean.
I think, I think the fire department so far, that's what they're doing. First call out, they're doing warnings. I talked to TJ, just in reference to the Akron, I talked to TJ last night and then I talked with Aaron again today. And that's what, that's what they did, the call out, they did the warning and both knowing that they'd go forward with action.
Kind of like a speeding ticket.
Well, and maybe something RTC can do, I don't know, where they have their banners or something on their, their channel. Maybe they can put a, we're in a burn ban or something too. I mean, I'm not sure how, try to reach all the resources we can to. And along those, along those lines, all the schools 15 years ago got those fancy electronic boards.
Right, you're right.
Under Republican Safety Grant.
That's true.
For community, community awareness, so I would think they would be an easy tell. You gotta put this up on your electronic board, we're under a burn ban, just that'll hit a lot of people.
Yeah.
I was real lucky with mine, it's a neighbor and they have agreed to pay for the damages on the cornfield. So, but that's not gonna happen every time.
Yeah.
So I'm real lucky.
Well, we'll do our best, I guess, and get it out there. Buy supplies, stick them on your windows. RHS, burn ban.
Yeah, if you see a neighbor's lighting a fire, tell her to put it out or there's something to it, call to the sheriff.
Thank you for that. Is anybody else? Okay, here you go, entertain a motion for recess.
Second.
All favors.